Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Megan, a second by Jen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes six zero. All right, at this time, I would like to invite our guests from Crestwood to come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. All right, thank you very much. At this time, I would like to invite Kit Norton and Jillian Holmes from Crestwood. They will now present their special recognitions and learning report.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to thank our board president for finding the matching sport coat tonight. That was great. You must have known our shirt. We're going to start with our student recognitions, and our first student that we're honoring is David Tomber Young. David, you want to face? Turn around and face that. So we have the honor of recognizing a student whose journey is a powerful testament to courage, perseverance, and the incredible spirit of our Crestwood community, David Tomber Young. Over his time here, David has made tremendous strides, not only in his own development, but also in the profound and positive impact he has on everyone fortunate enough to know him. David's participation in the classroom has grown tremendously. His teacher notes that during morning meetings, David's classmates love hearing him share his thoughts. There are wonderful moments of mutual respect where his peers listen with patience and encouragement celebrating his voice. This determination through in his academics as well. He works hard in math and learns to work more independently. Mrs. Long, our counselor says, David has come so far, becoming a fantastic verbal communicator and a true role model for his peers, always encouraging them to follow the rules and engaging in learning.
This growth is a direct reflection of the inclusive and kind community his parents see every day. They shared with us that David is 100% part of the Crestwood community, a feeling reinforced every time a fellow student goes out of their way to say hello or ensure he's included. This collective kindness has filled David's heart with so much joy that even before he had the words to express it, his happiness was undeniable as he would literally skip into school. This supportive environment has been the foundation for his incredible academic progress. His journey from being essentially nonverbal in kindergarten to now confidently answering questions in his general education class is truly remarkable. His confidence has soared as he works on new math concepts and uses technology to showcase the vast knowledge within him. David, your hard work, your happy spirit, and the bravery you show every single day inspire your classmates and even your teachers to overcome their obstacles. You are a cherished and vital member of our school, and we are beyond grateful that Crestwood is your second home. We are so proud of you.
Yay, David! Oh, David!
Hey, David, hang on one second. We're going to do, you gotta get a pic, you got a good picture with me. Recognizing you as Student Spotlight of the Month for Crestwood Elementary. So that's for you, that's yours. And then, you can never have enough T-shirts that say Limburg on them. So you got a new T-shirt tonight, too. All right, so we're going to take a picture right over here. Okay, and our second, that was awesome. Our second student honoree is Ms. Paige Wrightout, fourth grader. Would you like to come up, Paige? Come on, Paige. So we want to take a moment to celebrate a student who truly embodies the spirit and values of Crestwood, Paige Wrightout. Over the last few years, we've enjoyed watching Paige on a remarkable journey of growth, becoming an outstanding young person whose unmatched work ethic and kind heart serve as an inspiration to us all. Paige's determination is legendary among her teachers and staff. Mrs. Long, our counselor, also shared that Paige is a student who does not quit trying even when learning is hard. This resilience was perfectly captured when, after working on a challenging multiplication concept, Paige's first response was not one of relief, but one of ambition. She told Mrs. Long, "This was really helpful. Can we do this again?" That's awesome. That simple question reveals everything about her character. Paige is positive, she is resilient, and she courageously embraces challenges as opportunities to grow.
This incredible drive is matched only by her profound kindness. Her fourth grade teacher, Ms. Jewett, calls her such a sweetheart, noting that Paige consistently models our Crestwood values of being a kind, respectful, and responsible student. She brings a warmth and dedication to the classroom that make her a joy to teach and a friend to all. Perhaps the most beautiful part of Paige's story is that her incredible spirit is rooted in a genuine love for her community. In her own words, "I love my Crestwood school, and I don't ever want to go to another school because all my friends are at Crestwood." That deep sense of belonging and her excitement for our school are what fuel her every day. Paige, your hard work, your open heart, and your unwavering positivity make our school a better place. We are so incredibly proud of you and feel privileged to be part of your journey.
All right, Paige, we have a certificate recognizing you as the Spotlight Student of the Month for Crestwood Elementary. And like I said earlier, never too many of these, right? All right, we'd like to invite our Support Staff Person of the Year, Michelle Peterson, up to the front with us. Okay, Michelle Peterson constantly goes above and beyond in her role, making a lasting impression and positive impact on students and staff. She brings compassion, patience, and positivity to her role as a par educator, making her an irreplaceable part of the Crestwood team. Another one of your teammates says, Michelle, that you're a ray of sunshine in the building. I watch her every morning greet her students with a smile and a hug. She makes everyone feel loved and feel like they belong. She's a true gem at Crestwood. Michelle has an extraordinary ability to connect with each child she works with, providing a sense of care and understanding that deeply impacts their growth and development. She is loved by her students, which is evident in the trust she builds with each one of them. Michelle's journey with Limburg Schools began as a PE teacher assistant before she transitioned into her current role as a paraprofessional. Her deep commitment to student success is evident in the countless hours she has dedicated beyond her assigned duties.
Beyond those tireless efforts in scheduling and student support as that paraprofessional, Michelle also actively contributes to our school community in meaningful ways. Each year, she assists Mr. DC, our PE teacher, with the Read, Write, Run program, further demonstrating her dedication and student enrichment. Michelle exemplifies the quality of a leader in our school. She is cheerful, a bright light who uplifts everyone around her. Whether it's through a kind word, a patient listening ear, bouncing through the hallway with her music, or simply offering a smile, she radiates positivity and makes our school a better place for everyone. Michelle truly embodies the heart of our school community. Her unwavering compassion and dedication uplift everyone around her, making Crestwood a better place for students and staff alike. It is with immense pride and gratitude that we congratulate her as our Crestwood Support Staff Person of the Year. Limburg community, let's hear it for Michelle Peterson.
Well, Michelle, congratulations. And we have a certificate recognizing you as Support Staff Person of the Year, but we'll let you pick your T-shirt. Here's a $30 gift certificate to our online merchandise store for you, so congratulations. So we're now going to invite our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Lamisha Johnson.
Lamisha is the definition of student-centered. She maintains a warm, welcoming environment, all while challenging students to be their best selves. She is thorough, supportive, and analytical. She is flexible in her approach, depending on what each student needs. Kids feel loved in her room and work harder than they realize, enjoying themselves as they do it. As a colleague, she is a great example of being an expert in sharing her knowledge, but in a way that encourages and supports her peers. From your teammates, Susan Weaver says Lamisha is a teacher and a person with great integrity. She's extremely dedicated to her work and is always willing to help others and share resources. She does all this with great gentleness and kindness to everyone. I love having her as my teammate. From Ellie Morrison, "I am so grateful to work alongside Lamisha. Her willingness to share ideas and support others has made my first year of teaching an amazing experience. She is always kind, patient, and ready to lend a hand. Lamisha's passion for teaching inspires everyone around her, and her dedication to her students and colleagues makes our team stronger every day. I feel so lucky to have her both as a teammate and friend." And Diana Skubik said Lamisha is such a strong teammate. She keeps us on track, always finding engaging activities, and has a calming presence.
I can hear Diana saying that, right? Lamisha serves on our building leadership team as a representative for the first grade and also serves on our school equity team. Lamisha helps find resources to celebrate our Book of the Month selections, to help choose from the books in the summertime. She engages her students in the classroom with clear directions, songs to help them remember, and loving correction. She works with colleagues, counselors, and coaches to assist struggling students and does a great job of explaining successes and difficulties to our parents whenever needed. Her curriculum knowledge is very strong, and her instructional practices are even stronger. Lamisha's students know what to expect. She encourages them to reach new heights constantly. Her calming and positive presence is also appreciated, is so appreciated at Crestwood. Lamisha, you are a dedicated educator who goes above and beyond for your students and your team. Your kindness, your leadership, and deep commitment to your craft make a lasting impact on everyone around you. We're so grateful to celebrate this incredible difference you make each and every day at Crestwood. Limburg community, let's hear it for Lamisha Johnson, our Teacher of the Year. Lamisha, congratulations. We have a certificate, $30 for the online merchandise store, and then recognizing you as Teacher of the Year. So congratulations.
Thank you.
I think that's the board advisory. Oh, okay, okay. Weren't sure. Thank you. All right. Yep, okay. Thank you to the Board of Education for the opportunity to share the great things happening in the next chapter for our students and the Crestwood school community this year. Next slide. These next few slides briefly capture the story of Crestwood from last year to this year. It begins with us reflecting on the journey from construction to instruction, which took some perseverance, some flexibility, and ultimately, our appreciation. This time last year when we stood before you, we were deep in the midst of major construction, preparing to serve lunches in classrooms and making a creative use of every corner of our building. Our staff and students rose to the occasion with grace, positivity, and appreciation for the incredible work our construction crew friends were doing every day on our campus.
From the expansion of our fourth kindergarten classroom, a new gym and storm shelter, a new eight-room intervention hub, a safer car line, and a refreshed cafeteria, these images show an entirely new reality for our school. The addition of carpeting in classrooms has been widely celebrated by staff and students, softening sound, improving comfort, and making learning spaces feel welcome and calm. Altogether, these upgrades have dramatically improved the flow and feel of each school day at Crestwood. We are safer, we have more purposeful and inspiring instructional spaces, and the vision of Prop R for Crestwood has resulted in a powerful cumulative uplift to our school's climate and daily experience for students and staff alike. Now, let's take a deeper look at our story in the next chapter of Crestwood.
You can go, yeah, one more slide after that, Colin. There we go. All right, and now, next slide. We turned that perfectly, Colin, thank you. The Model of Instruction, MOI, is our district's framework that guides consistent, high-quality teaching by outlining evidence-based strategies teachers use to plan, deliver, assess, and reflect on student learning. In anticipation of the new teacher evaluation system being piloted this year, we have three Crestwood teachers participating in that, by the way, we've placed our primary focus on the Model of Instruction for professional learning with our entire staff. Next slide.
We are approaching this focus in two ways. First, by highlighting how teachers are already using MOI elements, and second, by helping teachers identify areas for growth. At the end of last school year, our Professional Learning Team, our PLT, labeled a building level heat map shown on the left with this image that identified areas of strength with green, inconsistency with yellow, and growth needs with red. In August, PLT members led staff through the same process individually. Each teacher then selected one design area, shown with the Roman numerals on the map, and one element within that area to focus on this year. The image on the right aligns MOI design areas with DESI Professional Growth Plan indicators highlighted in yellow, helping teachers connect their professional growth requirements with MOI implementation. Based on these element selections, every Crestwood staff member is a part of an element cohort to collaborate and learn with throughout the year. The bottom-right image shows one of Robert Marzano's books, The New Art and Science of Teaching Handbook: Design and Evaluation. This will be the primary resource our staff will use for their cohort professional learning this year.
Next slide. The top image samples the Model of Instruction work being done by a Crestwood first-year, first-grade teacher who partnered with our kindergarten and first-grade instructional coach, Jessica Ostrich, through an instructional round, focusing on improving whole-group math instruction with an added emphasis on executive functioning skills. This teacher is delivering a more engaging, hands-on math learning experience, meeting the needs of all students while also tracking data. The bottom image is one example from our third grade, where teachers worked with Tiffany Davis, our second and third-grade coach, by guiding students in partner reading to solve unknown words, being pattern hunters and using context clues, and previewing strategies. Next slide.
In this next chapter of Crestwood, we are starting new initiatives through Character at Play and the use of artificial intelligence. Limburg Life Success Skills of Integrity Inclusiveness are at work in our Character at Play program and critical thinking and creativity through the use of AI. Next slide.
Our Character at Play program was introduced on August, this year on August 28th during Sportsmanship Day at Crestwood and will be reinforced throughout the year during PE and counseling lessons. The program's focus, our playground should be a place where concepts of good character, sharing, compromise, fair play, and inclusion are consistently put into practice. The top-left image shows Mr. DC, our PE teacher, along with Ann Kleisch and Joy Long, our school counselors, who are collaborating on the rollout of the program. With a new playground facility and a campus layout that's new, this was an excellent time to reinforce basic play guidelines with the intention to minimize problems, maximize safety, increase student autonomy, and their enjoyment. Next slide.
The image on the bottom-left here shows the remarkable work our library media specialist, Beth Majdra, is leading to advance our goals in student satisfaction and critical thinking. By using our school AI platform, Ms. Majdra is creating engaging learning experiences that challenge students to think more deeply. The image on the top-left shows how our third graders can converse with Roz, the lead character of the Wild Robot. Students are moved beyond comprehension to analyze a character's motivations and grapple with complex themes like adaptation and friendship.
The upper-right images of Dr. Mickey Bow's fourth-grade class, who are preparing to use their SchoolSafe AI platform, Gemini. The system will analyze Dr. Bow's math, classes' math data to recommend specific board games that align with standards where students need extra practice. This innovative approach makes targeted skill-building hands-on, data-informed, and engaging for our students. Through Colin Davids' leadership district-wide, we at Crestwood are learning what our role can be as educators to guide students' use of artificial intelligence as an educational partner. Next slide.
Last year, we reported to the Board of Education about Crestwood's development of our Priority of the Priorities standards as a resource for our professional learning community, our PLC grade-level teams, to dive into cross-class flexible grouping in either math or reading instruction. Flex grouping allows teacher teams to group students based on specific learning needs within each standard with the goal of maximizing student growth.
Next slide. This slide is an example of how our third-grade team approached flexible grouping in math last winter and spring. The third-grade team started with teaching a whole-group math lesson. At the end of those lessons, they gave their students a two-to-four-question exit slip. Teachers put that information into a Google Sheet and divided up students by skill needs. Both images show how the team divided up their groups as well as their growth. In this case, the growth was in the skill of rounding. The results show that whole-group instruction, before Tier Two Flex Grouping, we had 41% of our students were at mastery of essential skills in rounding. But after Flex Grouping, 87% of students were at mastery in the area of rounding.
The bottom-left image comes from our recent Fall Staff Climate and Culture Survey. This portion of the survey reflects the strong collaborative culture at Crestwood Elementary, with 92% to 100% of staff indicating agreement on the importance of working together to ensure the success of every student. This shared belief in the collective efficacy is evident in the way our educators engage in intentional collaboration through consistent PLC grade-level work, ongoing Limburg School and SSD partnerships, and cross-class flexible grouping that responds to student needs. Next slide.
The top-left image illustrates that just over 80% of our students achieved at or above the average level in their spring 2025 NWEA reading, just exceeding last year's target of 80%. Our spring NWEA math scores fell short of our 80% goal last year at 74.4%. But we feel we are in a position to strengthen our students' growth path with strategic support from our new district math coordinator as we shift to a district using iReady for both math and reading. The bottom two images show our SABR's results by grade level from last year. The social-emotional work our staff provides serves as a foundation for supporting our core academic development. This is evidenced by our social-emotional learning screener, where a range, last year, where a range of 84 to 88% of Crestwood students were identified as being in the low-risk category. As we now shift to Panorama, SEL Assessment, and our staff learns how to use the data from that tool, our dedication to our students' overall well-being remains constant. Next slide.
And finally, last spring, Crestwood Elementary received the Green Schools Quest GSQ Community Impact Award in partnership with Truman Middle School. The GSQ is a statewide student-driven program for K-12 schools, public and private, to implement a low-to-no-cost sustainability initiative at their schools. The Community Impact Award is given to schools that demonstrate this initiative beyond their walls. Crestwood Environmental Club students partnered with Truman's sixth graders on a district-wide campaign to help bring back pollinator populations by educating and encouraging families on the importance of planting native plants at home. The next chapter of Crestwood's Green Stewardship will have Crestwood's Environmental Club coordinating a student-led initiative to bring comprehensive composting to our school. By transforming our cafeteria's food scraps from waste into a valuable resource, our students will engage in a powerful, hands-on learning.
Next, oh, this is the last slide. So to our Board of Education and our district leadership team, thank you so much for your support. We're here to help build a learning environment where every student can thrive. Your commitment empowers us to advance strategic initiatives to that foster both academic growth and essential life skills. I just want to add to, Happy Assistant Principal Week.
Happy Principal Week last week!
Thank you very much. We'll turn it over to RJ now for the Student Representative Report.
Thank you so much. I have a lot of very exciting information for tonight. First of all, two weeks ago, a whopping nine students were honored at Limburg High School for receiving a perfect score on the ACT. Yeah. Seniors Isaac Charney, Vihon Chowdhury, Holly Davis, Dylan Ellsworth, William Lynn, Andrew Minaj, Sammy Orth, Rachel Shraggy, and Blake Sellers were all honored in a senior class assembly and got some very sweet T-shirts for their 36s. I personally got to talk with William Lynn, and he credited not only his own personal study time, but the resources that Limburg offered, such as those after-school studied courses and connections to separate tutors across Limburg. Additionally, the Limburg High School Spirit of St. Louis marching band traveled to Ford Zuma High School over the weekend to attend the River City Showcase competition, featuring 14 competitive bands from across the area. So Limburg's competition show, Why So Serious, went on to earn a record-high score for itself in the competition, as well as winning captions and music performance, general effect, and first place in both prelims and finals. Now, Limburg has not had a competition show win first place in at least a decade, and this achievement, combined with their first-place win in September, shows how dedicated the students are to bringing their best selves out there. Limburg's 16th Annual Sunday Night Lights happened just a few nights ago, with a record number of kids and volunteers signing up for the event. I personally had the opportunity to work with the band program, where we had 10 amazing kids with us sign up throughout the night, who got to perform on instruments, announce in the press block, and play lots of fun games. As you guys all know, this is an event truly unique to Limburg, and I believe it is really a testament to the community that has truly thrived over the years. Finally, last Tuesday, I traveled to the amazing Crestwood Elementary School with Dr. Mason and Ms. Johnson to meet with the school's student advisory board. Now, this meeting comes at a time where we are still adjusting the SBRA system, which now includes that tour program for students to visually exhibit their changes, as well as just discussing them. So for this meeting, we divided the time between an initial group circle and a tour, which both lasted approximately 15 to 20 minutes. So in our group circle, students discussed their different learning styles and how hands-on activities with their design lab electives help students collaborate with each other. We talked about how to approach others who have different ideas or opinions, such as the end-all-be-all rock-paper-scissors, or other compromises, which they all agreed is a very important skill, especially in these times. During their tour, they highlighted their new community garden, which harvests fresh fruits and vegetables that they get to actually have included in their school lunches, which I just think is amazing. They showed me their new gym, which they were very excited to show, and discussed their specials classes. Overall, this new tour-based system is seeing its potential bloom as we work to incorporate every aspect of our students' ideas, and I'm really excited to see how it all comes out.
Awesome, thank you. While we would love for everyone to stick around for the entire meeting, I do realize that you may want to leave, so we'll take a quick break. If you want to leave, feel free to leave now. Now's your chance.
Run!
Okay, we will move on. We don't have anything in the consent resolutions, and there is no one signed up for citizen communication, so we'll move on to communications. RJ has a special announcement, so we'll start with him.
Thank you. So last week, on Monday and Tuesday, we finished up our selection process for the 2026 Student Representative for the Board of Education. There were twelve applicants, which I believe is a record number, if I'm not wrong. All of them had absolutely amazing credentials, were very pleasing to talk to, but ultimately the board selected eleventh-grade student Stella Pellerito as my successor for the Board of Education. She's an amazing individual. She's involved in Taylor Swift Club, foster advocates, track and cross-country, and she is absolutely thrilled to be going into this position for the coming school year. So I'm very excited to see how it all plays out.
Thank you, and I will add to that, that it was a very, very difficult decision that we had, so many good applicants. So I thank everyone who applied for applying, and we really do look forward to your successor. All right, turn it over to Ms. Voss, your announcements.
Okay, we have announcements, calendar events, and upcoming board agendas all moved into one session this time, so we don't have to keep coming back to me. So we're going to start with an announcement that the Board of Education Candidate Information Session will be immediately following the six-thirty PM regular Board of Education meeting on November twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. Interested Limburg residents are encouraged to attend to learn more about becoming a member of the Limburg Schools Board of Education. Candidate filing dates and information will be available soon in the Call Newspaper and on the district website. Please contact the central office if you have any questions about that. And then for the calendar of events, it is a musical propaganda. There's just a lot of it, lots of music. So October fifteenth, we have the Strolling Strains Open Fall Dress Rehearsal. There's no school on October seventeenth. I don't know why you didn't also list that's my birthday, so I mean, that should have been on here.
Well, that's why we're not having it.
That's right, that's right. October twenty-first is the Teaching and Learning Board Advisory. October twenty-third is the All Orchestra Concert. October twenty-eighth is the Communications Board Advisory. October thirty-first and November third, there's no school, so you can have lots of candy and not worry about not being able to come to school the next day. November fourth and sixth, there's elementary conferences, followed by pre-K conferences on November fifth and sixth. And then all the elementary music programs start. November eleventh is Crestwood. November twelfth is Long. November thirteenth is Concord. November eighteenth is Sappington. November nineteenth is Dressel. And then on November twentieth, we're back here for the Board of Education meeting and the Board Candidate Information Session following. Our board agenda for next meeting tentative agenda items include, for the record items, including curriculum, first readings, and literacy plan, approval requests for the audit for the past fiscal year, a resolution honoring American Education Week, and regular business items. And Dressel Elementary will be here for recognitions and their learning report. That's it.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to report of meetings. Does anyone have any meetings that they would like to report on?
I have a few. I guess when the school year starts, it starts to fill up with all the things, because all summer it was like, hmm. Well, a few of us were able to attend the CNA ribbon cutting ceremony at the high school, which was very cool to kind of see, and we heard about it earlier tonight. So it was really nice to see that in person. And also, four of us were able to go to the IMPACT Program to answer questions, so they were also here tonight. And, you know, just to see all that work, like I was on that task force with a couple others, and it was really just cool to kind of full-circle moment to go back and sit there and like ask them questions about the program and how it was working when we were part of like planning it, so. Yeah, and then I did Sunday Night Lights, which, as RJ mentioned, great event, it's one of my favorite of the year.
Well, I first want to just, RJ, congratulations on those first-place wins for band. I know as a drum major, you were a big part of leading that, so just a big congrats to you and to the rest of the band. So I just want to make sure you got that recognition. Yep, we did the IMPACT guest speaking, and it was so fun to just be with the students, hear about what they're learning, and answer their questions about kind of what our purpose is as board members and how we run campaigns and what elections look like. So it was a great, great thing to be a part of. Some of us were also a part of the Homecoming Parade, which was super fun, and we did a lot of running, but it was a good time, a really good turnout, a lot of fun was had. I attended the Governing Council Meeting last month, and mostly we just talked about a budget update. So just quickly on that, they are still targeting to get their fund balance between thirty to thirty-five percent, which is ideal for about six months of funding. Right now, they are currently working on a fifty-eight million dollar deficit, and there is still that riding the ship, as Dr. Macklin calls it, to get that into a better space. So the projected preliminary FY26 deficit budget is down to forty-four million. We also went over an SSD orientation to kind of talk about what the purpose of the Governing Council is. So just to give everyone a quick reminder that the responsibilities are electing special school district board members, approving long-range enrolling plans through the CSIP, approving and monitoring annual budget, and meeting at least four times per year. And just a quick reminder of what SSD really does in its service for students. Currently, it's serving twenty-three thousand five hundred and forty-six students in the county area, which is over five hundred and ten square miles, and two hundred and seventy-five schools, and that's a huge difference from their inception back in nineteen fifty-eight, where they were serving a hundred and sixty-six students. So the growth that has happened over those years is quite tremendous. I also attended the Foundation Board Meeting, the Limburg Foundation Board Meeting. They have had a lot of celebrations. Currently, they have, what's the word I'm looking for? They have seventy thousand dollars worth of year-long sponsorships currently, which is where they are and surpassed from last year. And all of that money is shared throughout programs, like the Junior Board and their innovation grants and so much more. Their Junior Board's been doing a lot of service projects as well. I also was able to attend the Class of nineteen seventy-five, had their high school reunion, their fiftieth high school reunion, and did a tour of the high school, which I was able to be a part of and lead, which was especially exciting because it was my dad's graduating class. But with that was a huge presentation, because the Class of seventy-five got together and donated fifty thousand dollars to the Limburg Foundation, and that was really, really exciting. And I talked to Eric Keating, our director, today, and even more money has come in from that class, so it's really more closer to fifty-five thousand dollars. And so that, along with the Class of seventy-two, who is up to forty-eight thousand dollars total, these are two very well-established scholarships that will be around for a long time. So it's really exciting to think about the opportunities that that will present to our schools and our students. And lastly, they have a new scholarship software that is going to be implemented this year called Kaleidoscope, and really is a platform where it will make the process for students applying for scholarships streamlined and way easier. So that, I believe, is open now or opening soon?
I think they are presenting to the PAT classes next week.
Okay, so it's coming.
It's coming soon.
Yeah, but there will be over seventy-one different scholarships that kids can apply for, and it will be really great for them to have that opportunity with almost anything that they want. Rachel and I also went to the High School Play last week, and it was really fun and funny, and yeah, I didn't know that the nineteen forties could be so hilarious. So that's all I've got. Thanks for listening.
The play was Arsenic and Old Lace. Yes, very funny, which my parents had actually heard of before. Yeah, but it was, thank you to the community again for allowing us to build that facility, the performing arts facility. I was able to attend the parent leadership meeting last week, and having come from that realm myself as a parent leader, I just want to thank the district for continuing to offer that opportunity. I'm pleased that it seems to still be very well-attended, and all the information that is shared is really helpful. Also, dialing back to homecoming, like you were talking about, I wanted to note, I was able to attend the banquet where we recognized the distinguished educators, alumni, and the Athletic Hall of Fame. And one of the presentations that really stood out to me was, actually, I want to say it was the final one of the evening, the two thousand fourteen Boys Volleyball State Championship Team, I think there were maybe nine or so that were there, and the coach. It was just so incredible to see the, you know, the result of the work that we do here with our pre-K and our kindergartners and grown men who have families and are coming back, and the friendships that they still hold, you know, dear to their hearts, and the thanks that they have for the time that they had at Limburg. So that was really an exciting recognition. And then last, I want to mention Andy, who's unable to be here tonight, but we were both at the Pinkout football game last week, which we ended up winning over Fox, which was exciting. What really, one of the things that was really special for me was, at the end of the game, and I've spoken with RJ to confirm this, I guess for a while now, the band has been gathering at the end of football games, and they sing.
No, it's everyone. It's the football team, palms, and dancing.
Right, yes. So the band had started doing that, to sing our alma mater. And as an alum, I wish I could say that I knew it, but I don't. Actually, cool this time, as Jen said. Yeah, it was, everyone gets together now, and so we had cheer and palms and the football team and the band, and everyone was quiet. It was very respectful and very moving. So thank you to the band for starting that, and to all the other organizations for joining in, and I hope to see that, win or lose, I understand, they do that, so thank you, Limburg community.
All right, anyone else? Okay, perfect. Next, we'll watch the MSBA Board Report. Colin?
... School Boards Association's Board Report. Filing for the next school board election is only a couple of months away. There are many things that districts can do between now and the start of filing to prepare. MSBA's Associate Executive Director of Leadership Development, Catherine Hairston, says that this is a great time to start communicating with the community about the upcoming election process.
So what I think districts and boards should be doing to prepare for candidate filing is getting the word out, letting people know, informing the community. It's so important to have the best people serve on the school board, the people who care about the district, who are advocates for the community. And so getting the word out about the openings that you have, and then also informing people, what is it really like to be on a board? And we really encourage you to have some sort of a community forum of sorts, and we actually have a, like a draft presentation that you can just download free off the website, plug in your information, and it's good to go.
Catherine emphasized the important work of school board members and how having an informed community affects elections.
Because of the importance of school board members and the impact that they have on the success of a school district and of a community, helping community members understand that voting in this election truly can change the trajectory of a district and of a community.
Catherine also says that MSBA has numerous resources to help potential school board candidates from filing to election.
For candidates, we have a whole page just devoted to a candidate, with like, what does it mean to be a board member? We have some flyers on how to actually file, the law behind it, our attorneys wrote this really great thing, which is awesome, that's new this year. And then we also actually have a module that you can work through at your own rate. It's interactive, that really kind of explains what does it mean to be on a school board? What does it look like? What are your duties as a board member?
Visit the MSBA website for all of the resources and training modules available to school boards and potential candidates. Additionally, you can learn about required notices, dates and times for filing, candidate qualifications, financial disclosure statements, and more at MSBA's Board Candidate Filing and Elections webinar, held on November fourth at one PM. This webinar is recommended for superintendents, board secretaries, and other central office staff involved in candidate filing. Find more information also on the MSBA website. Did you know that MSBA's Center for Education Safety Team has a book? The Essential Five Field Guide from the CES Team is a must-have resource for school leaders facing the unthinkable. Designed for board members and superintendents, this practical handbook breaks crisis response into critical phases. CES's Chief Operating Officer, John McDonald, explains how the book was created and why a resource like this is needed for school leaders.
Now, what we've done is we've talked to school board members, superintendents, and principals across the country that have experienced significant tragic events, and we interviewed them for the book. And this is really a CES project. We brought in all of our team members at CES. They're all part of the development and writing of this book. From preschool through high school, we train our kids. We train them on lockdown, what to do in a threatening active shooter environment. We train them on fire drills, where to go, how to evacuate. We train them on what to do in a tornado and how to shelter in place. But what we're not doing is we're not training our leaders on how to manage those crisis events. So we train our kids, we spend time with our teachers, we train our principals, and then it stops. Who's training the leaders? Who's having the open, honest, direct, relevant conversations with those leaders who keep schools safe? Those leaders that are making the decisions moment in time, in the first five minutes, five hours, and five days that define the next five years.
John says that after a crisis, lost time is lost trust, and that's where the handbook comes in.
Following crisis, you often have a limited amount of time to win back your school. And if you don't win back your school, then you really face some pretty significant issues, including loss of trust from your community. And trust is hard-earned and harder to keep. So how do we keep that trust that we've spent so much time, so much energy building, only to lose it because we're not communicating well, because we're not transparent, because we're not getting the information out fast enough? All of this matters moment in time. Our parents demand to know, our kids want to know, our teachers expect us to share what we know. That transparency is key. We try to lift that up through the book.
The Essential Five is available in paperback and on Kindle. Visit the MSBA website for more information. And last, but certainly not least, thank you to all who hosted and attended MSBA's Fall Regional Meetings. Meetings were held in all of the state's seventeen regions, as attendees gathered to network, learn, and share with fellow public school leaders to ensure all students succeed. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in November for the next MSBA Board Report.
All right, thank you, Colin. We will now like to hear from the cabinet, any updates that you have. We'll start with Beth Johnson.
We had the Communications Advisory met at the end of September, and we went over our strategy number one from our communications plan, which is to streamline and consolidate parent communication, in addition to prioritizing urgent versus routine communication and creating protocols for our staff and how they communicate at different levels. And so we reviewed some sample documents from other districts, and we talked about creating three different tools for our families and staff, one being a welcome packet for families who are brand-new to the district, to help them navigate the space between registration and the first day of school and answer their questions. Second, for families who are new to a school, to standardize the information that we're sharing with families when they enter a new school building, what communication tools we use, where to find information, who to contact. And then a third piece that would complement that for our staff, that has things like expectations for response times for communication, how to use our different communication tools, and where to communicate different types of events and things. So good conversation and good feedback from our group.
Thank you. Tara Sparks.
So Teaching and Learning meets again on Tuesday, so I don't have a new report from our previous board meeting. Originally, we were going to focus on our comprehensive literacy plan, however, we have since gotten direction from the state and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that we need to extend and go deeper on that process. So we've revised our plan for Tuesday's Teaching and Learning Board Advisory to focus on the high school scheduling process and what that looks like when students want to make a schedule change request and maybe move from certain levels of classes to other levels of classes. So we'll go deep on that conversation. And then for Student Life, we met last week, and we are in the process this year of looking at our social emotional learning materials and piloting new materials. For the past five years, we have used Second Step at the elementary level and Character Strong at the secondary level, and our students have been very honest that these materials have gotten quite stale. And so had a very interesting activity where the adults provided feedback on one end of the room, and the students provided feedback on another end of the room, and we had very different perspectives about the quality of our current materials and the impact that they've had. So I think it really highlights the fact that having students as a part of our board advisories helps to keep them at the center of the conversation and what's supportive for them. So we'll continue to go through that process over the course of Student Life Board Advisory this year.
So there's a disconnect between adults and students.
A little bit.
Little bit, okay. Dominic.
At the Technology Advisory, we looked at a draft of a technology survey. We want to send out an annual survey that kind of measures our support, our making sure we're giving people the right equipment, the right training, and the right communication. So we reviewed a draft survey for parents, students, and staff, and we decided we're probably going to send that out in February. probably going to send that out in February. That would give us some time, so that way we can get some results back and review that with the advisory. And then the other thing we did is Colin did a presentation on AI. So he kind of showed some examples of what we're doing with our students and showed examples of how teachers are using school AI.
All right, thank you. Joel Schreibel.
Okay, this month, we've had both finance and facility meeting, our finance meeting. We, of course, go through the board items that are related to finance. Those include budget amendments, change orders, and the finance items. Then we dig down into the financial statement and look at our revenue expenditures year-to-date. Again, this financials were for September, so it's still early in the year, but we have made our first payroll on all contracts, and we're, we're looking good for salaries and benefits. On the facilities, oh, I also want to say on the Finance Committee meeting, I want to thank Beth and her team. She's working with our Finance Committee and the Business Office on a financial dashboard. This is going to be a finance graphic that kind of gives the meat of the data in a user-friendly form. So we did have a lot of conversation with the Finance Committee membership about what they would like to see on that one-page sheet that doesn't try to get too detailed or overwhelming, but gets the information to our community members on how finance works at school districts. That report would be updated monthly, so it would show budget and then month-to-date information. So we're excited about that. We got a lot of comments, and Beth and I need to find some time to sit down and refine those. I see that probably as a working document over time, as we get more input on what our community wants to know firsthand. Then the Facility Advisory Meeting, I have to say, Dr. Lake led that. We talked about student enrollment at this time of year. We always look at that and look at our building enrollment. He talks about cohorts and how the attendance boundaries work. Then we dove into Prop R, which there's a lot of exciting things happening in that, a lot of great pictures. That group has a lot of good questions about the Prop R progress. And then Scott was diving into what's next after Prop R. What are we going to focus on? The things that are HVAC, parking lots, roofing, trying to do audits on that and plan a project after Prop R, when we get back to the operating budget, how we're going to keep up with what we're, have now, all new in our buildings. Dr. Lake, you have anything else on facilities?
Nope.
Both great meetings.
Awesome, thank you. And Dr. Brian McKinney.
Our group met, and we also covered the enrollment update that's official as of the last Wednesday in September, also in the board materials this evening for the record. We did a board workshop preview, previewed for the group what you all saw this evening. We also gave a compass item update on our research into a district-specific health clinic. Talk a little bit more about that in the insurance item later. And we also reviewed the monthly personnel report.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to action items by consent. Are there any consent agenda items anyone wishes to remove for individual consideration? Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion to approve the October 14, 2025 Consent Agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Rachel and a second by Megan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes 6-0. We will move on to individual action items. We do have two this evening. To open discussion about the 2026 medical, dental, vision, and life coverage and costs, do I have a motion to approve the 2026 medical, dental, vision, and life coverage costs as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Julia and a second by Jen. Open discussion is now. Dr. McKinney?
Sure. We've talked a lot in the last five years about the medical fund. Starting in 2021, it began to run over the allotted budget, and it's continued to do so. To put it in context, it's a nationwide problem. It largely has to do with skyrocketing pharmaceutical prices. We have taken a lot of different approaches to continue to provide a great benefits package for our employees, but also be fiscally responsible. We've learned that there is no silver bullet, and so we've put a lot of things into place. We started with RX and Go a few years ago, which was a different way to purchase medicine at a lower cost. Now we've taken that a step further, and we use Smith RX, and we've seen some really positive indicators, as you can see in your materials. Probably going to run around 5%. I'm hoping for a little higher than that, lower this year than last year, which would be a first to actually go lower in, in quite some time. And we also, with the very generous increase to the premiums made possible by the Board of Education, that started in July, and our plan year starts in January. So that's just started to have an impact. And so we'll see over time how those things help. Another innovative solution has to do with our health clinic that we are researching right now, and, and we're, we plan to have a presentation to the board in January from a group, a task force that's worked on that, and hopefully have some good news about the possibilities for savings there. So we bring this to you this evening because our insurance plan, our insurance year is offset from our fiscal year. So our insurance year is the calendar year. It's from January to, to December, and so it's about to end. So the next two months will be the time that our employees will enroll in the next plan year. We aren't bringing any changes to the plan this year. We did make significant changes this past year, and a few of these things are going to take some time. So we didn't want to throw too much change at our employees at once. So we're recommending the same plan structure for next year as we currently have, and we will continue to reevaluate and innovate and try and find ways to at least break even. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, no questions? Okay, time to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes 6-0. We'll move on to the selection of construction manager at risk. To open discussion, do I have a motion to select BSI contractors? Is the firm offering the best value for the district and capable of performing the desired services for the construction manager at risk? Proposition 2024 No Tax Rate Increase Bond Issue Projects at the following buildings: Concord, Dressel, Sappington, Early Childhood Center, Main, and West, Lindbergh High School, and Central Office, and authorize the administration to negotiate a contract as presented?
So moved. Second.
All right, I have a motion by Megan and a second by Kristi. To open discussion, we will open it to Joel Schreibel.
I don't have to explain CMAR to this board too much anymore. This is a familiar process from, that we stepped our toe into with 2019 bond proceeds and the gifted center, and has been a success, and we've used it multifaceted places. And as you can see, with Crestwood coming online and being just about finished, it really is a successful method for the district. We do, this is a longer process than just general contracting. As you recall, last board meeting, we had to, the board had to approve an intent to use this method. So last month, the board approved that intent, and then after the board meeting, we went to work to put a qualifications request on the street and have CMAR firms submit their qualifications. We did have six firms submit their qualifications. From that point, we narrow it down per policy. You can take up to five forward. So we narrowed the qualifier, the firms down to actually four were moved forward based on a rubric and scorecard that's, looks at kind of jobs they've done similar to schools, looks at their safety record, looks at their financials. And so the four were moved forward are then put into the next step of the process, which is another proposal put out just by invite only to firms to submit pricing. So when we get qualifications, there are not fees related to that. We're actually making our decision on the qualified applicants, our firms, without pricing data. We asked four of the five firms to submit pricing data with that information. We again go through a rubric and scorecard. Then we take those firms. The final, we picked two out of the four to move forward for a board interview. Thank you all for spending time with us last Friday afternoon, interview meeting and a board meeting on a Friday afternoon. I appreciate you doing that to interview the two top firms. And the board has a sheet that they fill out, scorecard, and based on that data, BSI, which we are very familiar with and is in our district now and will be for the next couple of years, which was really one of the factors that really played well with putting these other smaller projects. This, this last CMAR project is going to be a combination of a lot of the smaller projects left with our bond money. Some of this we're funding because of savings and the construction that we've got to so far. So with this, if the board approves this tonight, we'll move forward. Scott and his team, Dr. Lake have already been out in the buildings looking at the projects, and Dr. Lake is going over budget numbers closely, keeping in contact with me, locating new dollars, finding savings. He's just become a great budget manager. So I appreciate all of his help and his attention to detail, so.
Thanks for keeping him in line.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, we will now vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes 6-0. For the record, we do have three for-the-record reports this evening. They are Professional Learning Plan, Parents' Teachers Program Evaluation, and Official Enrollment. These items are listed as informational-only. Board members should reach out to Dr. Tara Sparks or Dr. Brian McKinney with any questions. Under closed session, we've already conducted all of our closed-session business. Therefore, there's no need to return, so we will move to 13.0 adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn Board Meeting 1626?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Jen and a second by Megan. All in favor?
Aye.